Give me a second, folks. I'm gonna catch up on something here. And it writes, there we go. Okay. All right, looks like everybody's here. Had a successful tour of the water treatment plant. Appreciate everybody showing up for that and staff that put it on. It was phenomenal. It's always great to hear and see what it takes to get everything to our faucet when we turn it on. We just expect water and we expect it to taste good and be clean. And you guys make sure it is. So, you know, sitting on this big aquifer, we have a lot of it down there. When I talk to third graders here several times a year, I always tell them, we're talking about where we get our water, where we get electric, blah, blah, blah. And I always say, we get our water from a big lake, straight down there. And they always want to look down and, "Where?" I go, "It's down like towards China, way down that way." And they don't understand because when you talk lakes, they think of a lake that we all know. And so it's a fun explanation of what an aquifer is and how lucky we are to be above it. So, thank you for doing that. Welcome tonight. Councilmember Leslie Bezzel will lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together tonight. We're grateful for the chance to serve our community and to do meaningful work. As we go into this meeting, give us clear minds and steady hearts. Help us to listen to each other, speak honestly, and make decisions that are fair and good for everyone who calls the city home. Give us wisdom, patience, and a spirit of teamwork. And as always, we ask that you guide us to do what's right. Bless this city, the people in it, and all those working to make it better. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Bezzel. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bezzel?
Here.
Councilmember Paulus? Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Brill?
Here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved? Any agenda modifications for tonight's agenda? Hearing none, and will stand as stated. Is there an executive session request for this evening?
No request, thank you.
Very good. Special presentations, this is a good one. Donna, I'll come over to you. How's that? Okay. I am missing my microphone.
Don't admit to that.
Testing one? Yeah, Donna is, uh... Been on this commission for years and years and years. Ten years. So, being that you're getting around a little slower, I'll present this to you from here. Is that good? All righty. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas trees and the urban forest are an important part of our community's infrastructure, valuable assets for our next generation, and whereas trees and the urban forest have been shown to reduce crime, vandalism, vehicular speed, and are important to our community's safety mission. Whereas trees and the urban forest reduce stormwater runoff, reduce pollution, and are important resources of our community services and mission. Whereas trees and the urban forest reduce air conditioning costs, heating costs, save our residents money, and reduce the energy needs, making our community more livable. And whereas trees and the urban forest make our neighborhoods more inviting and attractive in our foundation of our community development efforts. And whereas trees and the urban forest attract shoppers and businesses and are important components of the community's economic development mission. Now, therefore, I, Metrodus Mayor, the city of Fairfield, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 Arbor Day in the city of Fairfield. And I urge all citizens to support the efforts to protect and nurture our trees and urban forests, not just for the beauty they provide, but for the benefits they give our residents and community as stated above. Thank you. And on behalf, Donna, would you like to say anything?
Um, next Tuesday, up at Huffman Park for Arbor Day, we'll be planting a tree. And then on the 24th, we'll be at the city of Wyoming for the Tree City Luncheon, where we will be awarded a 30-year member as Tree City and also a growth award. And hopefully we get another one this year because the Isaac Walton Group is providing us with 30 trees to be planted by fourth graders in some of our parks. Mandy will determine which parks need new trees. And I look forward to seeing all that. This is my last year. I've been on there 10 years. I need a break because I'm involved way too many things. I'm a trustee for the Rosie Reds, sang the National Anthem last year. And I'm on the board for the coping board. They elected this non-German to the board. So... But I will be back here to see you because I gotta get my fix for council every once in a while after serving 18 years in my former community. So...
Well, thank you very much for what you've done over the years. Holy cow. I've sat with you at Parks Board meetings and council meetings, so thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. We also want to welcome, I see Channel 9 out there in the news. They are always good to us here in the community. They also did a nice article tonight. It'll be on Channel 9 about Marsh Lake. So, those out there wanting to watch that, that'll be a nice one. We have a beautiful place out there and they got some really cool shots of the lake. So, thank you, Channel 9. All right, citizen comments. Good old Sue. All righty. We'll move to council reports down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mobile mammogram van will be in the parking lot of the Fairfield Community Arts Center on June 5th from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. Appointments can be made by calling 513-584-PINK. The Junior Police Academy runs from June 2nd through the 6th from 8:00 to noon at the police department. Registration is required and participation is limited. The deadline to register is May 19th. Safety Town will have two sessions this summer. Session one is June 16th through 20th, and session two is June 23rd through the 27th. Both sessions run from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. and will be held in a new location, South Elementary. Registration is required and participation is limited there as well. The deadline to register is May 19th. And last of all, registration forms for both the Junior Police Academy and Safety Town can be found on the city website under the Police Department Support Services section. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've been to both of those for the last few years and they are a blast. So, if you're, the junior age is eight to 10, or I'm sorry, uh... Seventh, eighth, or ninth grade? Incoming, cool. So, I highly suggest looking that up and getting your kids, your grandkids involved in that program. It's phenomenal. All right, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Utilities Department is pleased to announce that the city's 2024 Drinking Water Quality Report is now available online on the city's Water Division webpage. For more information, visit FairfieldCity.org. The report required by the U.S. EPA provides an overview of water quality testing results from Fairfield's Water Treatment Plant from 2024. In '24, the city met or exceeded all national standards required for the production of drinking water. Hard copies of this report are available here at the city building or upon request by calling 513-858-7775. Also, the Public Utilities Department hosted an open house at the water treatment plant this past Saturday. Over 70 residents participated in the open house and learned about the water's treatment process. And then we also took that same tour and got to learn about it. So, good time. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, 2024, the Butler County Land Bank was awarded approximately $600,000 in demolition grant funding from the state of Ohio to support Route 4 redevelopment efforts. Last week, work started on the first of these projects, the demolition of the former Mango's Restaurant Building and partially collapsed retaining wall at 7121 Dixie Highway near the intersection of Back Road and Route 4. Aurora Wrecking Company expects to complete the project by mid-May. The public should be aware of temporary road closures of, excuse me, of temporary closures of the adjacent service drive during the project. The second project involves demolition of the building foundations, parking lot pavement, and other miscellaneous structures around the former Budget Inn and Pearl's Diner sites on the northern end of Route 4. The land bank plans to open the bidding process for this work later this week. Upon completion of the projects, blight will be removed, will have been removed from the city sites and the sites will be more attractive for redevelopment. The city of Fairfield thanks our partners with the Butler County Land Bank for their assistance with obtaining the grants and managing the demolition projects. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Mrs. Pennington?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have something for Public Works. And I'm happy to report that the contractor for South Gilmore is mobilizing now to finish the section between Mac and Reza Road in the next month. The next phase is South Gilmore between Reza and Route 4 and will begin in June after the school is out. So, is that gonna be completed by the time school starts, Ben? No?
No, but the intent will be to have it complete by the end of the year before winter.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Very good. I bet, I know I've gotten several. I'm sure you people, you know, when is that road gonna get its final layer of pavement? And for those of you that don't understand it, we almost got it paved. But, you know, blacktop companies shut down in December. They have a specific date and they don't make blacktop after that. And we were right up against it, right up against it, and getting very, very close and missed the date. So, it's not that we ran out of money because people asked, "Are we out of money?" We came up with a second layer on there. How can it be this long? I've heard every excuse there is. But it is because now the blacktop companies are making blacktop again. So, all right, Councilmember Bezzel.
My turn. Just a couple of quick announcements. Public Works has opened restrooms and drinking fountains for the season. Be advised, however, that the restrooms at Water Works and Lower Harbin near the pickleball courts will be closed for substantial renovations. They will have portalets there for people's convenience, however. And drumroll, please. The big news of the night is the grand opening of the Splash Pad and Playground at Harbin Park on May 17th. The ribbon cutting will be at 11 a.m. and there will be ice cream and giveaways. And do you want me to go ahead and read the ordinance? Are we to that point or...
Uh, no, not yet. Probably, let's see, no, I quit. We will get to you, though. All righty. Uh, the only thing I was gonna do besides what I've already done is welcome our new judge, Judge Zose. He was sworn in recently and is a new addition to our judge, retiring judge Joyce Campbell. Retired. And welcome Zach. He's active in the community and most people know him because you've seen him around all over, so... All right, um, let's see here. Approval of the minutes, the regular meeting on March 24th. If there are any additions or deletions, we'll let them stand as approved. All right. Go to Old Business. Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Bezzel.
Thank you. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to approve and adopt Fairfield's Marsh Park Master Plan dated spring 2025. I'll let that stand as the second reading.
I'm just curious, is there any reason not to go ahead and suspend it, you guys?
I believe we've structured it in a way that the Parks Board is going to approve at their next meeting, which is this week, which would then allow you guys to approve at the third reading at the second meeting in April.
Perfect. Okay, I was thinking that, I had Parks Board written down here. All righty. Well, that was an exciting, uh, exciting movement. And we're getting it done down there. Thanks you for the council. We have a phenomenal council here working on this project, so, and staff, even you. All right, Public Works, Councilmember Pennington.
Okay, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract, excuse me, with American Structure Point Incorporated for the development of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Action Plan. And I'm gonna leave that as the second reading.
All righty. Moving on to New Business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all New Business by title only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Community and Public Relations, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for community and public relations. The ordinance is to adopt a new section of Chapter 166 of the Codified Ordinances of the City. This section is to create the Sustainability Commission. The creation of a Sustainability Commission will enable appointed citizens to assist in the advancement of critical Fairfield sustains goals and strategies. Thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Brill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to adopt new Chapter 166, Section 166.01 and 166.02 of Ordinance Number 166-84 of the Codified Ordinances of Fairfield, Ohio, to create the Sustainability Commission. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
I could not be more proud of the city, the staff, and this council for taking, the amount of work that's going into the sustainability plan that we have in the city is remarkable. And if you look at this from, from a planning and visionary standpoint and the execution, it's pretty short that we were able to do this. And the comprehensive plan is remarkable. We were able to hire a professional to help mentor this and move it along. And this is the final chapter of that, is allowing residents, we have wonderful residents, we're great volunteers, and they're looking for opportunities. This is a great opportunity to help execute that plan. So, I'm very hopeful and just couldn't be more happy.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, not about approving this, so it can wait until after we vote, but I do want to, I do have a question.
Okay. Well, actually, you can go ahead and say it now, just in discussion mode.
So, we had a candidate, and Mandy, you may be better, um... Okay, so, will that person be approached or... Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you.
That was it?
That was it.
That didn't hurt? Cool. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Now, uh, let's see, Parks and Recreation, Councilmember Bezzel, or Mr. Timmer?
We have two ordinances tonight for Parks and Recreation. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions for the Parks Playing Courts Rehabilitation Project. This project is to renovate the existing courts at various parks. At the conclusion of this project, all paved playing courts in the city will have been rehabilitated in the last three years. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation for the replacement of golf maintenance equipment. This is to purchase two new greens mowers and a new greens groomer to be used at both South and North Trace. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bezzel?
Thank you. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions LLC for the Parks Playing Courts Rehabilitation Project at various city parks. I'll let that stand as the first reading. And then I also have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Jerry Pate Turf and Irrigation for replacement of golf maintenance equipment. And I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And I'd like to move for adoption. Second.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Ma'am, the, it'd be good to know the resurfacing is, um, that's being redone on, like, Gilbert by vendors. There's some people, you know, people are complaining that it, that we've already paid. You know, I know we haven't, but can you explain that a little bit to, to the benefit of...
Yeah, I can speak to that. Those are Public Works projects. Um, so that, that project was also through Prodigy and their various subs. The courts were resurfaced. They have not been, they were not done to our satisfaction or Prodigy's for that matter. So, they've been in talks with the subcontractor as to what the correct fix will be. We have not paid anything for that project today.
Okay, so this contract has nothing to do with resurfacing those courts?
No, that one's still outstanding and they are aware that it needs to be remedied. And we are still holding 100% of the, of the contract value.
Perfect. All righty, cool. Thank you. I knew that, but I wanted it for people out there, if anybody is listening, that that's a good thing to know. All righty. Uh, let's see here. Uh, so we've already done that. Moving on to public safety. Have I taken that from, you got it? Good. Uh, Mr. Timmer?
We have two ordinances tonight for public safety. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mobilecom to install 10 new emergency weather sirens. The city currently has 10 emergency weather sirens strategically placed around the city to notify residents and guests of impending dangerous weather. The current system is nearly 25 years old and past the end of its useful life. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Vogapool Fire Equipment for the purchase of SCBA equipment. This request is to purchase 12 additional self-contained breathing apparatus for emergency response and training. The purchase will equip all reserve apparatus with SCBAs and enable the reserve apparatus to be placed in service to the community at a moment's notice. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Crapp standing in for Councilmember Paulus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mobilecom Inc. to install 10 new emergency weather sirens and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second, third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, that's very much needed because they went off recently and I thought they was going to, like, on its last breath. So, I'm so glad this is being done.
One, one question. Scott, these are not 10 additional on top. This is replacement. Correct.
Okay, thank you. And they're much better, the quality, et cetera, the sound definition and everything, so, cool. All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
I also have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Vogapool Fire Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of SCBA equipment for the fire department and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second, third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
All right, Public Utilities, Mr. Timmer?
We have two ordinances and one resolution tonight for public utilities. The first and second ordinances are to authorize the city manager to enter into contracts with Chemicals, Inc., USA for the purchase of bulk sodium hypochlorite and with Univar Solutions, USA, for the purchase of bulk fluoride. Daily, Fairfield's Water Division pumps, treats, and distributes approximately 5.5 million gallons of drinking water. The division is currently upgrading the chemical treatment process related to disinfection and fluoridation. The upgrade project is nearing substantial completion and the department would like to secure contractual pricing for the bulk purchase of these chemicals. The resolution is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Butler County Board of Commissioners for the purchase of water during emergency events through an interconnection near Tyler'sville Road. Interconnections are one of the most essential components of a public water system for the purposes of system resiliency and redundancy. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Davidson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Chemicals, Incorporated, USA for the purchase of bulk 12.5 sodium hy- hypochlorite and declaring an emergency. So, the first readings, move to suspend the second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Univar Solutions, USA for the purchase of bulk 23% to 25% hydrofluor- uh, fluoride and declaring an emergency. That's the first reading. I move to suspend the second, third.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from the fire chief, what was that word? Comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And last, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Butler County Board of Commissioners, Butler County, Ohio, for the purchase of water during emergency events through a water system interconnection near Tyler'sville Road and declaring an emergency. That's the first reading. I move to suspend the second, third.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, thank you. Public Works, Mr. Timmer?
We have two ordinances and one resolution tonight for Public Works. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Proshot Concrete for Storm Sewer Repair. We have 48-inch, 54-inch, and 72-inch diameter corrugated metal pipe throughout the city that needs lined to prevent future failures. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the EV charging station grant project. ODOT combined the two separate grants to the city from, for the charging stations. Locations approved were Water Works Park, the Library, Justice Center, Community Arts Center, and Harbin Park. OKI is supplying the match to the federal money. The only city, city funding associated with these project is engineering for the bid documents and permitting. The resolution is to support the state issue two renewal of the State Capital Improvement Program on the May 6 statewide ballot. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Pennington?
Thank you, Mayor. The first ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Proshot Concrete Incorporated for storm sewer repair, corrugated metal pipe invert, lining, and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for electric vehicle charging station through OKI funding for multiple public locations and declaring emergency. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council.
Scott, have we made the decision on whether we're going to charge for this service?
Yes, I believe the chargers that are being installed will, will require you to pay a fee as well as switching over the ones at the Community Arts Center so they would all become a fee for service.
Okay. Which, this goes through Ben's organization?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All righty.
And then the last is a res- oh, did you get approval?
Oh, that's right. You're, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Then I have a resolution to support the state issue two renewal for the State Capital Improvement Program on the May 6, 2025 statewide ballot. And I want to keep that as a first reading. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Finance and Budget, Councilmember Meyer, I'm sorry, Mr. Timmer?
We have three ordinances tonight for Finance and Budget. The first ordinance is to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain municipal court employees. Specifically, the ordinance adds a full-time deputy bailiff and adjusts the pay range for the chief deputy clerk. The second and third ordinances are for appropriations. The contractual appropriations total $1,017,136 and include five projects in the Police, Fire, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works Departments. The non-contractual appropriations total $460,893 and includes 16 projects in the Fire, Public Utilities, Parks and Recreation, Administration, and Public Works Departments. Thank you.
All righty. Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items. First is an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain municipal court employees of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, and to authorize and limit the numbers and types of certain municipal court employees to repeal Ordinance Number 39-24 and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience, comments from council, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The second is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Number 154. Thank you, the second is an ordinance to amend Ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-four, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The final is an ordinance to amend Ordinance number one fifty-eight dash twenty-four, entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations and expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, during a period, January first, twenty twenty-five, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Like, make motion to suspend the second and third readings, please.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption, comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Alrighty. That's a nice agenda, folks. Madam Clerk, could you read the, uh, meeting schedule?
Monday, April twenty-eighth, council manager briefing, six P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M. Monday, May twelfth, council manager briefing, six P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M. Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, council manager briefing, six P.M., regular meeting, seven P.M.
Thank you, folks, and thank you for joining in online, those of you that do, we appreciate your input.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjourn? Motion second for adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.